First up, we have a public hearing on a local law regarding New York State Solar Permit. Katie, will you read the chapter and verse?
Please take notice of the public hearing. We call it the Board of Trustees of the Village of New York on June 2, 2014 at 7:00 PM. A public hearing regarding amendment to Chapter 86 of the New York Village Code, proposed amendments to the New York Village Code in Article 3, dash, and Solar Energy Permit Process, Section 86, dash, 15.1, whereby installation of a standard solar energy system can be standardized, simplified, and accelerated in municipal municipalities across New York State, in accordance with the New York State Solar Permit Process.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here to speak to this? No? All right, you wanted to save a little bit, 30 seconds for the camera, but what this is about?
Yes, it did. Really, it's just, we have nothing on our code books allowing for solar power, permitting it, or any way for it to be allowed. So, in order to apply for a grant that would get us money for solar, which we'd like to do on some of our streetlights, we have to have a law in place that allows for solar energy in our community. So, that is where this came from. Pat Corby Strong had emailed us the grant information. I've been working with Will, the attorney, and Brandon, the village planner, on the application itself, and this is a piece of it. And Will said that even if we, Will, the attorney, said that even if we were not looking to apply for this grant, it is good for us to have solar permitting on the books and this law that shows that we encourage solar energy.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll move to add this to the agenda then.
Okay.
The resolutions from the village attorney for that.
Okay. We're gonna move the reorg section of meeting to the end, because we have some appointments to make beforehand. So, with that, would you all please rise for the pleasure of reading?
At my request, to signify, I am the United States of America, and I should be a public authority, as stands, one nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and rule.
Thank you. All right, so I've got some changes to go over, so I'll just run down my list. At the request of trustees, removal of consent agenda items eight, nine, 10, and 11, and add those to the regular meeting.
Number five. Also.
Oh.
Well, I guess now it's four.
No, it's still number five.
Okay.
Number five, eight, nine, 10, and 11, remove the consent agenda and move to the end of the agenda.
12 is off.
I'm looking at the new agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's this one.
Yeah, 12 is already off.
All right. So, I'd like to, unless there's an objection, I would like to add three things to the consent agenda. One is hiring one of our summer help physicians. The second is the Allen Sledge contract, which is sole source. And third is the en masse reappointment of Katie Silberger, Jason Rosenberg, David Cacamo, Tom Olson, Agnes Deveraux, and Susan Wentz to their respective boards and commissions, with the terms added by the clerk after the fact.
And Katie, you realize Mr. Cacamo's reappointment is from last year. You got that, okay.
Right.
What about Brandon's?
Hold on, I'm going through my list, so. Next, I would like to remove items number 12 and 13 pending our meeting with the building department. Though I would like to point out that in your packets, as requested, is the secret documentation from our village attorney for the housing law and environmental assessment form.
That's in the packet?
It's in the packet, yeah. So, just as an app point. Finally, to several additions, one is a letter from our director of planning regarding a CFA grant for a green village code. It would be a letter of support. Next is repeal of absolute fire safety requirements in the code. Next would be the appointment of a fire board. And finally, the solar permitting law, action on that.
In the deletions, we're gonna call for a hearing at the same time?
Yes, the resolution when we get to that one.
When we get to it, yeah, we'll do.
All right.
So, I'll move those changes to the agenda?
Yep, because we have a new agenda. We're taking park use requests off, plaque, the old nine, the old 10, and the old 11.
Correct.
Okay.
And tabling 12, 13, and adding those that I suggested, including those to the consent. Is there a second to my motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, before I made that, is there any other additions or changes to do, Jen?
I'm exhausted already.
Yeah, I know.
You got one.
All right. All right, well, then, let's go right into public comments. Anyone here to comment publicly? Mr. Cacamo?
Yeah. Reason I'm here, number one, is because you have down here to prove plaque, a lot have the plaque for I don't know how long, two, three years. And there's the plaque. And the reason it hasn't gotten put on there, and the other one was not stolen, I have that one also. The other one was beat up with a rock or something, very disrespectful of our Japanese friends from our sister city, U.S.A. So, we have a new plaque made, it's a much heavier material, and I talked to Blue about getting it put on, because it has to get put on properly, so that if somebody does start beating on it, it won't, the same thing won't happen. And what that means is it needs thin set, so that the hole underneath side, because the rock is not even under there, the hole underneath side is absolutely level, and then this has to be secured too. The reason that I didn't put it on is because in New York City International Exchange Association, we were talking about moving the sculpture over to a community center behind the town hall, and that didn't come to fruition, so I think that was sometime last summer, anyway. I was in Japan, and then since then, I've been having surgeries and so forth, gone, hasn't had time to do anything with it. So, anyway, there's plaque, and I don't know if it's okay with the board, I'll go see Blue, and we'll get it on.
Sounds fantastic.
That's the first thing. Second thing is, I'm very upset about the stream. The board had approved me supervising the laying of the stones from the stream. While it went on and on and on and on, and I kept contacting yours former, and nothing happened, and I took off for Japan. Before I went to Japan, I spoke to the man, I explained exactly how this should be done, what it should look like, and he assured me he knew what I was talking about, that he had done these things before, and don't worry about it. It's horrible. There is nothing natural about that stream. I defy anybody to show me a stream that's lined with flat blue stone. It's terrible. And he did exactly what I told him not to do with the other stones. Now, I assume that you paid him already, and that's the end of that, and we're stuck with what we got. But for the record, I'm stating, it's terrible, it was a horrible job, I don't think we should ever have another contract in this village for anything like this again. And the other thing, the third thing I'll take up with Blue.
All right, thank you, David. Any other public comment? John?
Hello. So, I received in the mail yesterday, what a turendity. It says, roof in disrepair. A few months back, I took a chimney down that was up against the side of my building, and it left a two-foot-by-12-inch space in the overhang. And putting record, I think it looks unsightly, I'll admit to that. The reason that it was never repaired is I had plans to take the house down. So, I figured, why put the effort into it, I'm hoping to take the house down shortly, but that's no longer my plan, so I get to apologize that the community had to look at this eyesore for a few months. And Will be taking care of it in a very timely fashion. I was hoping to do it today, I got the thing yesterday, I was hoping to do it today, but it was raining, and I didn't feel like going to run all that.
I know the feeling.
But with that said, I have a problem with these walk-throughs, these so-called neighborhood walk-throughs, looking for the quality of life and aesthetic, whatever you want to call it, just improvement. I love the idea of it. It's great. It made me go around and look at all my other houses with the shop a rye, and I see some things that need taken care of. And from that point, I thought to the board who are having these walk-throughs, there's no reason, the garbage cans should be out on the lawn, I got one of those as well on another property. There's really no reason for us, I'll be the first to advance. But what I have a problem with is two of my neighbors adjacent to this property, their roof, their overhangs are completely rotted out to the point where they're crumbling, they're forming. That's one house. The other house adjacent to me has a blue tall over the roof. So, I asked the building inspector just to verify what I was being cited for, and he told me, and I agree with it, like I said. But then I asked him if the neighbors received any notice to remedy, and he told me, no. So, my question is, why was I singled out? Why was my house singled out, when my neighbor's house was literally, I could take all of them, 10 times worse, but yet they didn't get one? And that's, that's what I would like to know from the board. And I don't, I'd rather not have an answer, well, we didn't see that, well, you saw mine, you didn't see that one. So, during these walk-throughs, maybe there should be some people with better eyesight on it. I don't know. But one thing I can say is, I'm gonna lay my cards on the table. I feel like I was profiled, because my house is a rental, and I was profiled because of that. My two adjacent neighbors who are owner-occupied, nothing for them, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So, that's my issue. And that's my issue with the new housing standard law, because it doesn't hold everyone accountable fairly and equally.
Thank you, John. I can assure you, no one is being singled out because of their landlord, it's just not what's happening. And I don't know, I was on that walk, Sally's been on most of them.
I wasn't on that one.
Not that one, yeah. But she could tell you what happens, has happened on the subsequent ones at least. I know there were a lot of people on that one walk, I think 14 of us, and we didn't invite all the people who live in this street.
I wasn't buying that.
Okay, good, I hope you got the invitation.
I could have been there.
And though, because it's hard, I can't prove a negative, you know, I don't remember the houses in question, but if it wasn't listed, it was either not noticed, or it was that the people, we had taken notes, pulled in a couple different directions and missed one, and that's just all there is to it. I mean, we're not, this is not a, it's whoever shows up, and we've got some village staff there.
With all due respect, I do not buy that for a minute.
Well, I was there, and I know I didn't, if I'd seen it, I would have pointed it out, John.
No, that's...
Excuse me, John, I know, I can tell you that if I had seen it, because I was there, and I was feeding information to the building inspector who was there, and the planning board secretary who was there, and the planner who was there, as well as everyone else, I can tell you, I'm not speaking in front of anyone else. If I had seen it, it would have been on the list. Everything I've seen has gotten on the list.
Is it possible to get a list of everything that came back that day?
I suppose so, unless there's some reason that, unless there's some reason that it's a privacy thing, I don't, other than that, if it's foilable, it's gettable. Call the building department tomorrow, and they can tell you whether they can give it to you, and I'm gonna get it. Though I do have your address down, I'm gonna be sending out the building inspector to that section of the street to look at things again, on either side of 46. You said it was 46 Church?
That's my house.
Right, and on either side of yours.
I would like to make it clear that I'm not here to rat out my neighbor for...
No, no one thinks that.
You know what, they have their lives they're living.
You're here to make sure the law is being enforced equitably.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And you know what, if that's, if that's what happens, you know, I, you know, I drove around this community just looking, and, you know, you could find something wrong with everyone's house, without a doubt. Bang, bang, bang. You know, it's, and that doesn't mean that, you know, everything needs to be, you know, if that's the community we want to live in, then maybe we should go live in Rhinebeck or Beverly Hills.
I thought you said you'd love to see it become like Rhinebeck here.
You know, there's problems. This house is on the lawn, there's, there is problems, but let's just be fair, please, that's all.
We're doing our best, John.
To be fair, and what's good for this person is good for that person, it's, you know, it's...
I can assure you, we have a meeting tomorrow, and I will inquire as to the question you have raised, because I think all of us are interested in equitable, fair treatment, that if you recall, the last meeting, I talked about poison ivy. I'm sorry, we have a rule about poison ivy, we're enforcing it on people who own property, and I say the village itself better clean up its act, because we've got a lot of poison ivy on our property.
Now, why you allow this?
So, we're trying...
I'm allergic to poison ivy. I'm allergic, I look at poison ivy, I blow up.
My point, my point, John...
You know how to spray it?
Fair is fair.
You know that?
No.
So, have you...
I pull mine out.
We cannot spray, like the village cannot spray. On your own property, we are not saying that.
How do you do it?
That's a whole, it's a whole of the conversation.
Wait, wait. What are we doing here? This is public comment, we're now engaged in a conversation about how to get rid of poison ivy.
We're not engaged in it.
No, we're trying to talk.
Tom wanted, Tom had something to say, actually.
I did have something to say. I do not often like to engage in discussion during public comment, because it's public comment. But I'd want to say, in defense of the village and its walk-around, that I was cautioned after the walk-around on Platycal Avenue, and the next day, in spite of rain, I went out and I cut leaves off of my lilac plant, which were overhanging the sidewalk, and I trimmed my spruce tree, not a blue spruce, a regular spruce, but I trimmed my spruce tree so that it would not hang down over the sidewalk. The next day, after, I got a warning.
Well, my husband beat you because he didn't that night.
I did, because I got there faster than they could do that.
My husband, we got a warning also, because our lilies were over the sidewalk. And I went home, and he was very upsetting.
But, and sometimes all...
You're coming up on your three minutes, Dr. Seinfeld.
How about that, 30 seconds?
You got 30 seconds.
Yeah, sometimes all people need is a suggestion, you know, that doesn't look so good, you know, like a piece of paper, like something, you know, but let's not start hanging people and pitting neighbors against neighbors, because, because someone has a lily hanging over their sidewalk, you know, it's...
Thanks, John.
Let's be fair.
Adele, and then Leonard?
I have a question, if you can answer it, and I, you know, the idea of the walk-around sounds really great, I wanted to join a couple of them, and, but my question is, because I see, or I did see, some of you guys walking in and out of people's backyards onto their properties on these walk-arounds, I mean, I noticed it myself. And I'm curious, I mean, are you allowed to do that? Just like walk on people's properties unannounced, go in their backyards, come out, find things, and...
No, to my knowledge, and to my knowledge, no one has gone into anyone's backyard, I don't know.
Yes, I saw it.
Oh, did you? Yeah, well, if it was yours, I apologize.
It wasn't mine.
No, it's supposed to be.
No, it wasn't mine, but it was during your walk, and it wasn't my backyard.
Well, I'll start warning people ahead of time.
Were there people who were on the walk?
What?
Was the backyard, was it going on the walk?
Yes, coming out of the backyard, I saw two, on the same block, coming out of backyards twice. So, my feeling is, I mean, to turn something nice like a walk-around into something that it's not, is really inappropriate and it's tacky, right? You're not supposed to be on someone's property without, yes, you know...
I'll start warning people before we start the walk.
That's what you're facing, so, okay.
Yeah, Leonard?
I have a simple one. I was asked by someone on the rescue squad, if, when you do these walk-throughs, can you please make sure that the houses have numbers on them?
We've been checking.
So that they can find the houses.
Yeah, we've been checking. Yeah, thank you, Bill. We actually found two, I think, the last couple.
Right.
I just wanna say, I've been on several of the walk-arounds, and Grant, the neighbor, has been alert to not going on fire property. So, if this was an early one, well, it's not the first one, but if this was an early one, we may just not interact together at that point, but the fact of the matter is that the rest, so Grant made a point of saying, I don't think we can go there, that's not, that's fire property. I'm not clear about one thing, though, and we may want to get clear about this. My understanding is, when the building inspector is with us, if the building inspector sees something at a distance that is a health or safety issue, like what my insurance partner, or something like that, that I believe he is capable to go and look, even if that's on fire.
Adjust the building inspector.
Yes, 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 yes. So, but I think that it would be good to be really, yet really clear about that.
That's a good point.
Katie, where are we walking tomorrow night?
If you'll give me one second, I will have to...
Because everybody who wants to can join us.
And it's on the front page of the website, and I update it as frequently as, and just give you once, and I'll be delighted to tell you, I just don't know off the top of my head.
Lookout and South Oakwood Terrace.
And Center Street. They just found out later today that Center Street will...
So, if anyone is watching right now, there'll be representatives from the village walking Lookout Ave, South Oakwood Terrace, and Center Street, along with any neighbors who would like to join us.
And we meet at six...
Or any members of the public, frankly, who would like to join us.
And we'll meet at 6 o'clock down here, outside the door.
Center and West Center.
Center and West Center, thank you. All right, any other public comment?
Jason, I'd like to ask a question about this ladder truck that the fire chief wants to build. Do we get any kind of money from the college for that?
No.
Why are we obligated to buy a new fire truck then?
Well, because our old one is nearing the end of its life cycle, so we have to replace it.
But is there anything wrong with it?
Well, no, it's in good repair, we keep it in good repair. If there's anything wrong with it, we'd have another one here. But just so you know, the ladder truck was not, then the fire chief has corrected me on this several times over the years, several fire chiefs, actually. The ladder truck was not bought because of Suni. People think that the reason we even have a ladder truck is to reach the top levels of the skyscrapers on campus. It's not. It's more for Main Street, and what the example he uses is the thesis fire, which was, I think, in the late 80s, early 90s. Having the ladder truck there means we can angle, get angled above buildings and move from one to another, and kind of have more area to act in a small congested downtown. So, that's why we have a ladder truck, that's its primary function. It's just, not a happy coincidence, I'm sure there's another reason to that, get it, having those tall buildings, but we would have a ladder truck even if Suni wasn't here.
Well, because we got the ladder truck after that was built.
Right. So, but we would still have one, we would still have one, according to the fire chief.
That makes sense.
Leonard?
I don't remember the man's name, but he was at one of the Gulf Rights hearings, and he had said that they, from the college, that they would like to be a good neighbor. So, this is a wonderful opportunity to knock on their door and ask them if they would still like to be a good neighbor. I realize they provide us with fuel for these trucks, but it doesn't hurt to ask, and most they can do is say no.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Thank you.
And you say please.
Yeah.
And thank you, hopefully, then.
All right, any last comments?
Yeah, I just want to ask, do you want me to just bring this to Blue? I mean, are you gonna vote on it tonight, or you want me to...
It's a different plaque issue, but we can, you can leave it here, or if you're gonna see Blue, you can just drop it off with him, whichever...
I can drop it off with him.
Whichever is easier for you, David.
I mean, they're, you know, you're gonna...
Do you want to help?
No, we're approving a different plaque tonight.
Yeah, we're talking about a different plaque altogether.
The historical marker. But you need to leave it with me, or leave it with Blue.
I'll say Blue, because I want to talk, and we're not putting it on.
Great, thank you.
But that's why Katie recommended that you get in touch with Blue, so that the two of you can agree on how it gets adhered to the surface.
Yeah. All right, so, closed public comments, I'll move the modified consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We write down Tom to number 14, discussion on supplemental budget for phase two of the...
Want to do that now?
It's next on the agenda.
Next on the agenda.
And congratulations on your reappointment, David, you've just been reappointed.
Thank you.
I sent you a copy of a memorandum that I had sent to Dan Mishag of DEP explaining the request for additional funds. As you could easily guess, I am not the person who did the budgeting for this, since I am a liaison to this group, and I'm overseeing their activities on behalf of the village, but I wouldn't have the confidence to have done the budget modification for water exploration phase two. But the memorandum explains why we need a budget modification for water exploration phase two. We already, as a board, extended the length of the contract and activities engaged in water exploration for a two-month period, and in the interim, the interim starting the very evening that we approved the extension, there have been a sequence of issues relating to neighbors' wells along Plains, neighbors along Plains Road, and it has taken a great deal of the time and energy of the team to deal with that, and indeed, all well exploration and testing has stopped since that evening. We have done additional sonar work that is mapping the structure of the earth in that area in order to determine the extent of the well field, but we've done no additional work. That means that we're deferred, and we will have to rent the equipment all over again and so forth. The details of that are in the summary of supplemental budget modification request, which was prepared by Dave Pflausser with the assistance of the folks from Chaysen. So, this is a request. It does not commit us as a village to spending any additional money, but it is a request to DEP that... to DEP that they fund the activities that would be ongoing from now until the end of August. That's enough. Is that enough?
Yes.
Or is that too boring?
Right.
I don't think it's too boring.
I will move to approve the requesting of DEP an amendment to their budget and to the contract that exists between the Village of New Paltz and New York City Department of Water in the tune of $302,500.
No, 300, I'm sorry, Sal. It's actually a total of 363, of which 303,5...
Look at the last sentence on the second page.
Your budget modification is 302,500.
No, Sally, look at the last sentence on the second page.
No.
Of the, of the budget.
I see what the letter, the company letter is for 303,500 and plus 60,500 for contingencies. That's in the letter.
Well, I'm sorry. I think, did you, did you notice that there's several options? So there's, there's a flat rate and then there's the optional.
Right.
And so what we want to do is what we is...
So the total is 363 now.
Not to exceed, we want to approve, not to exceed 363.
I had broken it between and the contingency.
Oh, I see.
Prefer combined?
Let's just do that not to exceed total.
Okay, 363,000 budget amendment and...
Are you making that motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, my, my question about it is, this is a request.
This is a request.
And will they, have they indicated whether or not they will grant that?
In the same way that they indicated before, when, as you know, when we put in our initial request for funding, it has to go through the whole
Right.
...structure of DEP and the Water Board and the Comptroller's Office
Of New York City.
In New York City. But we have every indication from the administration of the Catskill region of DEP that they are strongly in support of this and that they will see, they will do everything they can to see that we will get it. If we did not get it, we would cease our activities, right? Upon expending the original budget.
So that if you want, the motion can show it is understood that the Village of New Paltz will not assume the cost of this extra request.
Right.
That's fine with me if you want to add that.
Yeah.
I would accept that.
You would like that?
You would accept that?
Okay, good.
Uh, sorry, are we voting on the amendment now?
Pardon?
Did you just amend?
We already, we already voted on.
If everybody's happy, we can add that.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. All right, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next up is, I move to authorize me to sign a letter of support for the Green Form Based Zoning Code grant that the building, planning director has written. And just so you know, this is the same program that the town's Henry W. DeBois, no, not the Henry W. DeBois, it's another one.
This is, this is Cleaner Greener Communities.
Well, there was another, there was another application. Anyway, there's another Cleaner Greener Communities application out there for New Paltz, I believe.
Yes, the solar energy.
Solar energy one, okay. I spoke with Mark Flower, this, it doesn't change our eligibility, it doesn't change our competitiveness having two applications in, and we've actually done it before with CFA. Remember when we got the sewer money and we got the 50 grand for the, for hazard card engineering?
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of Cleaner Greener Communities grants, so.
So just in case you weren't inside.
Yeah, it's, it is separate. Although along those lines, I saw the email from the village planner that we are applying for a TAP grant, the Transportation Alternatives Program, which we have...
Sidewalks.
For sidewalks, yeah, which we all know, we all know sidewalks. But we have also supported the town applying for both municipalities, that same exact grant, which would affect the part of money for the Henry W. by ordinance.
It would affect.
According to Flower, it would not affect.
I, I saw a note that I knocked out, it would not affect.
Yeah, and the same principle.
It's the same part of money, though. This is, this is different. The Cleaner Greener Communities has many different grant applications. That's the very same one.
Right.
It's broken down into different categories.
And Mark was, Mark was answering me on that both.
Okay.
He said that when you, when you apply, when you put in two applications to the same program, it doesn't let you water down your, your chances of winning or it doesn't, other than don't expect to get both, you know, except they, they don't, because it's a ranking system.
Right.
So it's a point system, really, more than anything else.
Okay, I just, I just think, you know, there are people who I've heard from who are not pleased with us having applied to the TAP program.
Well, we check on all of that, so if there's some, you can have them call me if they want a second, if they want to hear it directly from me or something.
No, that's fine. Um, I just, I just think like there, that maybe Brandon knew before she went ahead and did that.
No, I asked her to double check on that with Mark.
Okay.
So, all right, now I made the motion. Was it?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
No, no, just second.
Oh, sorry.
I think the motion should reflect the amount we're applying for so that the 25% is understood.
No, I can't, I can't remember, except that it's...
$100,000.
Was it $100,000 for this?
Yep. Well, that's stated in the letter.
It's in the letter.
Yeah.
So she said that it would be $12,000.
So Katie, I think that reflect in the minutes.
Is it, are you happy with that? Just to have it noted in the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I don't have anything looking to repeal the LC fire equipment. Did I misplace the paperwork?
I did, because we just want to repeal, whereas it is the opinion of the village board that the village code's section 86-29, 86-30, 86-31 relating to fire limits districts and sprinkler system requirements have been rendered obsolete by amendments to the code, code, regulations, rules and regulations of the state of your NYCRR, which have been made subsequent to an act of the four said sections of the village code. And whereas it is the opinion of the village board that the four said sections of the village code should be repealed because current state building requirements set forth in NYCRR surpass and conflict with the requirements of the village code's sections 86-29, 86-30, 86-31. And whereas the village board wishes to schedule a public hearing to consider the adoption of a local law repealing village code sections 86-29, 86-30, 86-31. Now, therefore, it's hereby resolved that a public hearing shall be held by the village board in respect to the potential appeal of the village code's sections 86-29, 86-30, 86-31 at 7:30 PM on June 25, 2014, at the New Paltz Village Hall, 25 Plankville Avenue, New Paltz, New York. And it is further resolved that the village board is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of such hearing being given as provided by the law.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Actually, my local law.
What date are you setting, Katie?
It's June 25th.
Hmm?
It's June 25th, our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so Jason?
Aye.
Uh, Rebecca's up here. Sally?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Arianna, Paul, Vince, Cynthia.
Two yeses, two ayes.
And I'll move to appoint a fire review board for the purposes of reviewing a proposed plan before the building, from, before the planning board and the zoning board of appeals in the Village of New Paltz. And we must do this because, that's why we're deleting those sections, because New York state law has superseded village law. And as a result, there's not enough time between our rescinding of the law and getting the project reviewed properly. So that's why we're doing it. And Jason, building inspector Travis?
Travis, yeah.
Fire chief McGuire?
Mm-hmm.
And do you prefer Rich Ruth or Will Frank?
Should we pay our engineer to do this, or lawyer to do this?
Well, either one. You...
Yeah, that's true.
It would be in the retainer, I would think.
Let's appoint Rich Ruth pending Brandon Harris's approval.
Fine with me.
Because if they don't have time for it, we'll know.
Accept that.
Because an engineer would be better than a lawyer for...
I have a question about this, though. It says, if these subsections are immediately removed, the request concerning a fire limits district report review would be the only one necessary.
But the problem, Arianna.
So, so we're, this is just for the interim?
This is just for this one because by the time we have the hearing, as the law, it's going to be a good six weeks before the law goes into effect and the, the plans are before both boards, so we gotta...
Okay, I understand, I'm just double checking that that's...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I moved it.
So I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is, what, what do you guys want?
There is a proposal for the core business district, which, as you know, is a special fire problem. And in our code, we have outdated code requirements regarding that whole fire issue in that business zone. We're going to, at the recommendation of the planner, remove those three parts because they've been superseded by New York state law. However, because we have them on the books, they still apply. In order to move the project forward for the applicant, to ask the applicant to wait two months before we can get our act together, we have the option of having a fire review board review the plans with the planning board or independently. Jason, it's with, isn't it?
It would have to be.
Yeah. To review the plans so that the, the process can move more exponentially.
Second.
All right, I'm going to skip around a little bit to the ones I think are no brainers or short discussions. The solar permit law, I'll move to, unless you want to.
Aye.
It's a resolution.
Fire resolution. All right, let's take it as read and I just want to do, I'm still move, make the motion. Is there a second?
I will.
Okay, and any discussion? Katie, you want to call the roll?
Yes, Maryra?
Aye.
Uh, so I'm here, Rose?
Aye.
Rocko?
Aye.
That's it.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Want to do the plaque next?
No, let's do that at the end.
I don't want to lose my paper.
Sally, let's move on. Sally, you, you had asked that the...
I can.
Let me back up.
Yes.
Oh, no, I was going to go on the other things and do that after.
What are you doing next?
The new hire. We had Roy D. retired, he's a longtime Public Works employee, retired last month, and the head of Public Works has requested to fill the vacant position of municipal worker one created by Roy's, Mr. Henry's retirement. He would like to hire a gentleman by the name of Tyler Scott for the position. He's worked for the Department of Summer Health in the past three years. And we have in the past trusted the judgment of DPW superintendent in terms of specific hires for his department. So Sally, you had asked that this be removed from the consent agenda, so you want to address what your concerns?
I don't have any, I don't have any concern with the applicant, but I want it understood. Now, people can vote no on this. I believe that it is part of the job description of our buildings and grounds and park people that they take care of the poison ivy in the park areas and that this board not expect the taxpayers to pay a separate firm to be employed to remove that poison ivy. And I am happy to support this new hire if it is understood that, yes, our department will hold the poison ivy. If they aren't going to do it, then I will use the money that this employee represents in terms of hiring and hire the consultant.
Well...
And that's the choice, as far as I'm concerned.
I, I'm not saying that there, there isn't merit to the two issues. I would really think it, I think it unwise to hitch the two together, to make filling a vacant, a needed vacant position in the village conditional on one thing being done, I think is, is unwise, especially because I'm still trying to work with Blue to figure out. We, I'm still waiting on, on the final price from a company to remove it so I can put it before the board, whether it gets voted down or up or whatnot. I'm also still looking with Blue at natural waste, remove the poison ivy from the parks.
Are you willing to table this until you have the answer?
I would, no, because I really don't want to, I don't want to hold a position hostage to one issue. We need, we need the DPW fully staffed, no matter what we do with poison ivy, and I think we should have two separate discussions. I don't, I don't, personally, and that's, so that's my, that's me.
Okay.
Arianna.
I will...
Well, let's, let's, Arianna, I'll just keep...
I think maybe what I have to say would be best said in executive session, dealing with personnel matters. It's, it's personnel, really.
It is, but it's also board related and I think we as...
What I have to say.
Yeah, what you have to say, yeah. I, I, I make, I couldn't possibly comment on what you might have to say. What I would have to say is that we as a board can express ourselves as a board and we can pass a resolution here expressing our understanding of the rules that govern the Department of Public Works and the requirement that poison ivy be cleared. So while we may not be able to direct those people, since the mayor is their supervisor, we can as a board pass a resolution indicating our understanding of the, of the responsibilities of the department and our unwillingness to pass any resolution or motion that would require additional funding.
Well, there's also a third way, a third option, which the mayor may not wish me to do, and that is to move to direct the mayor, to direct the DPW
Oh.
That the poison ivy be removed by the DPW employees and that I will also move the hiring of the new employee. So...
Those are two separate motions.
All right.
I, I, yes, they are two separate motions. And I don't disagree with your analysis, but I do, I do think that the consideration of the specific position and, you know, the person that they want to hire for it should be something separate from...
Okay, then I'll move the first, that the, the village board direct the mayor to direct the DPW to remove the poison ivy.
I'll second that.
Good.
Okay. I, it's, you can't do that, but I mean...
That's my concern.
You can't direct the mayor to direct staff. I mean, obviously, but obviously, not obviously. Um, all right. Well, let me just vote then.
Wait, I would like to say something. Very early on in my tenure on the board, which is only a year ago...
But you'd never know it. You act like a pro.
I know it. I, I did have a conversation with, with Nikon folks about my relationship to the mayor and my relationship to staff, because there was a minor flat very early on. And I was assured that I can, in fact, interact with the staff and that I can request of the staff anything I need in order to function as a board member and that no one should interfere in my getting any information that I believe is required or that I can show to be required. On the other hand, it was made pretty clear to me that the mayor is the supervisor of the personnel and that I should not interfere in the mayor's supervision of the personnel who run the departments in the village. So I would feel loath to say that I now should direct the mayor to direct somebody, which I believe might be an interference in the mayor's supervision of the personnel. I would not hesitate, however, to pass a resolution saying that it's my understanding that... the poison ivy ought to be cleaned up and it ought to be cleaned up by the DPW because that's what it says in the rules.
All right.
Do you wanna withdraw your...
I'll go along.
You're on my second. And we'll go with the resolution.
All right.
This may, this may put things into a different mind frame, too. Keep in mind, I'm glad we unhitched the two issues, so that's good because they're, they both deserve their equal treatment.
Right.
I guess what I would ask for is that whatever resolution is going to pass, I mean, we're all in the same opinion. The goal is we want poison ivy out of our parks.
Right.
Because, not because it's in the law, though that's a good reason, and not because we're asking the proper members to do it, but because we don't want our constituents to get poison ivy when they go to play in the park. We don't want little kids running after a ball and pushing up with poison ivy. I mean, that's the goal, right? So...
But it also is not to have laws that the village board itself thinks it is a...
I'm not saying that aren't corollary issues, but I'm saying the central goal is get this noxious plant out of our parks because it's harmed our constituents. Blue and I are still working out a proposal about how to do that to present to the village board. So it's really a matter of timing. And our recommendation may be to hire an outside person. It may be to, if I can find any goats to the last minute, you know, to get a herd of goats there to eat it or whatnot. But we are gonna be presenting something to the board because there's gonna be trustees and they make decisions about how to spend the money, about whether this applies to some money here or what.
Right.
So, we're just not there yet, is all I'm saying.
So, shall we table this until we get there?
If we wanna table the poison ivy discussion until our next meeting, it should be done by then.
But Jason, my point is if the Department of Public Works believes that this is not their responsibility, which I think it is, then I am concerned that we will sit here in two weeks or a month with a proposal to resolve this issue meanwhile having spent the money to hire another staff person who's not going to be doing the job. That's my concern.
Think about this, though, Sally. No, well, no one in the Public Works Department, and certainly not Blue, thinks that this is not their department's responsibility. The question is how, how do you take care of that responsibility? And there are some things we do ourselves in-house and some things we hire outside professionals to do. Like, we don't, we don't install it on sidewalks because we just don't have the manpower to do that. So we hire our boards or whoever gets the bid. So, really, the question is, and it may just be something that Blue and I ourselves just laugh off as completely impossible to hire someone to do it. And in that case, we need another plan. But I'm not gonna let it slide, I'm not gonna just throw it in my hands and say, well, we tried. We need to get this stuff out of, out of the park.
Right, and for two years you have been trying to accomplish this.
And we did, ran a bunch of experiments and tested natural...
And also giving instruction
Yeah.
that it should be done.
And, and you have to admit, there's a concern if you're, if you're susceptible to poison ivy, you know, you don't wanna expose yourself to things and whether this, whether that rises to the level of needing to hire some outsider is something that I wanna do with the board when I have all the information. And it could be just something...
It's the money on, you know, full-body suits.
And that's the discussion we're gonna have.
I mean, I know people who just plastic bag their arms and go in there and do it.
Rubber gloves, two plastic bags, and our son-in-law's waders from when he was not fishing.
Well, and this is exactly the conversation I expect to have, it's just I want the prices in hand before I have...
I'm gonna move to table the appointment of the new hire.
All right, well, I was...
And then be done with it.
I hope that fails, sorry, sorry.
I'll second.
You'll second? All right. All in favor of tabling the appointment of Tyler?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Fails for a lack of majority.
So, I'll, well, this is not gonna, I don't think this is gonna work, but given that the motion failed, a lot of you consider appointing him tonight? Would either of you consider appointing him tonight?
No.
Given that the motion failed?
Not unless we have...
Like I said, I think I would love to talk, discuss this in executive session, so I think we should have...
I would like to appoint him tonight. But I think we have to have a better understanding of the...
Let's, let's, let's table this till later in the meeting, we'll have a short executive session.
Don't say table, just defer.
Defer, all right.
Right.
We'll move on.
All right.
On a related note, in Soakin River Park, you all might have noticed that the driftwood from the floods piles up and makes, I'm gonna guess, a third of the park unusable because it's just a solid mass of wood. And there are downed trees in the park, and there was one that we had to actually cut down, a really old tree that some idiot had lit a fire inside of. There was a little, there was like, there was a little thing, a hole in the bottom, and they lit a fire, had a campfire inside the bowl of the tree. And about four feet, it was just char, char inside the tree. And this huge thing, as wide around as the table, was half chewed out by this campfire. So we had to cut that one down for obvious public safety reasons. And so in talking with Blue, I've been, obviously, I've been working with Blue a lot and trying to figure out how to maintain Soakin River Park better. That's where the poison ivy discussion comes from. But another one is constantly bugging him to get the driftwood and things out of the park so you can use it or make trails. The problem is, is that there's no way to get any equipment into the Soakin River Park. The stream that bisects it prevents us from getting in boat launch side and the ramps and stairway.
I went and looked, Ariana, Jason's right.
You can't get a wood chipper or anything like that or brush cutting, anything with wheels down to where the logs and such are. So, what Blue came up with was to ask permission of the village board because it requires board action to allow the DPW to have, to burn the driftwood down at the edge in the park on rainy days. So what, as Blue described it, he said they pile up the wood and when it was gonna rain, they'd throw a tarp over the wood and then when the park was soaked, they'd burn it and then over time, we'd eat away at the detritus from God knows how many storms, opening up the park for more use. So that's the origin of this request. And it was on the consent agenda, Ariana, you had said, you had pulled it, you wanna talk about your concern?
I'm just on down, I'm just burning. I don't, I, well, there's, there's a couple of reasons. One, I, I feel like a lot of the downed tree, I mean, I did not go on the books, so I did not know what this looks like, but I, I mean, I see a lot of it on my back desk on rainy days. But so, so I'm assuming that it's that area where the bridge is.
Wherever the...
The Soakin River Park is where the boat launches.
It's the whole thing.
But then the other, the other little areas that we would go down to...
That's also so the nature fucks.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so I'm assuming that's the area.
Right, and it's fucked with the downed tree, though.
Um, I mean, the decomposition of the natural area, like, you're not supposed to break your... The best thing for your trees and the soil is not to break your leaves, but to let them decompose where they are and the nutrients from the leaves go back into the tree. There's a whole love 'em and leave 'em campaign for that very purpose. So I feel like this goes right along with the same idea. Granted, it is a park that is supposed to be more accessible and used, but it is not a park like Hasbrook Park. We're not, it's not a ball field that needs to be cleared. It's people going into a more natural environment to enjoy nature. So, I, I just, and I just don't think, I mean, the idea of burning, burning, I, I trust that on a rainy day, the virus will spread, it's all, all of these these different precautions will be taken, but it just doesn't seem like the best idea.
What about, what about this thought, too, though? That, I agree with, I mean, I agree with you on the lands that are not, not parks, not...
Not manicures.
Not manicure, not, or not supposed to be, not, not like, not human habitat, I guess, I'm sorry.
The natural environment.
In that natural environment, however, though, we would have periodic fires that would cook itself on its own. Lighting strikes and such, things that we would put out now, allow a buildup of huge wood piles. Now, if we have a long drought and we've got enormous piles of kindling off of the park, wouldn't that be a hazard? That would make the burning worth the risk? Controlled burns to get rid of the brush that could kill the, if we had a lighting strike there in the water, you know, and that pile caught fire. I mean, that's why they do controlled burns on the mountain, to prevent the buildup of detritus.
It's more than that on the mountain, there's, there's all kinds of species...
Species need to play.
Yeah, that, that only live in...
But one of the reasons is...
Plants that only bloom after, in the seeds that only...
But the point is to replicate a natural fire that has, and one of the benefits of natural fire is to eliminate understoryed brush.
Right, well, we can vote on it, obviously, I don't know.
Um, any thoughts?
I don't, I don't need to convince everybody else.
My only concern is that somebody has checked with the fire, our fire department, and the proposed plan is reasonable. I notice, of course, that in the event where we do some public or open-air burning as we do for the holiday trees, Christmas trees in Hasbrook, the fire department is in attendance and they follow some pretty strict rules on, you know, how to contain that. I would just like to know that they've been consulted.
How about this? I'll move, I'll move, we approve Blue's request on the condition that the fire chief approves every instance.
I would go with that.
I'm pretty sure Blue has already done that thought.
But let's put it in the minutes in the motion.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, two things. I suggested they burn the poison ivy.
Oh, no.
No.
Noxious, yeah.
No.
I'm teasing you. But I did... I knew that would get a ride. Anyway, what I was hoping, the reason I went to look was I was hoping we could have a summer barn bonfire on Hasbrook Field. But it really, it, it's impossible to get to.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's what I'm supportive of. It really is, and it's...
So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Then...
Thank you.
Did you see Ariana's face when I said? I'm bad.
All right, next I have park use. This, again, what was your concern about park use?
Well, there's no insurance. And if we wanna waive the insurance, I think we should make that part of the motion. I remember when this happened last year, the young lady came to give this presentation. I totally envy her being able to use the potter. I just want, my question was that term.
My, my question was, why did this come so late? Because I looked thinking she should have used the new form and you've had this since May 25th.
May 15th.
May 15th.
Or she just turned it in after some...
There was, there was a pull-up on her behalf, she wasn't sure if she was going to have the event, she's heading, she's done two years at the local college, she's heading off to college, she wasn't sure if she was gonna have the event, she kind of went back and forth. I don't specifically remember any other reason why we would have that.
Well, the reason I ask Katie is that we are going to have to understand that this park use is coming in under the old rules, not the new rules that went into effect June 1st. And also, we're gonna have to waive the insurance or...
Or never an additional.
They actually are willing to supply insurance just like they did last year, they just didn't have the specifics yet. They were going to get it closer to the date, just like they did last year.
So, let's approve it pending...
Pending that. Is there any specific directive that we give people? I noticed that they will have amplification. And is there anything that we give people that says that you can have amplification, but you still have to have some limit on how much noise there is?
The noise, the current noise ordinance, vest, quiet, amplification, you're not allowed to be too loud. The new form says specifically that the village will not pay for any of this.
This says also, the village will not supply amplification.
We will not supply, so she understands she's gotta get her own restrooms and all that kind of stuff. But the current noise ordinance covers this park usage now.
Do we give people the current? Do we give these people the current noise ordinance?
We give them a copy of the park use policies, which have it stated what the noise is allowed.
Could I request, then, whether we need to do a resolution or could I request that the noise ordinance be attached to that and given to people?
Park use policy.
Park use policy.
Katie, it is, which she has because she had to have it to fill that out.
Otherwise, I support this.
So, that is not new in the...
Depends on standing insurance.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yep, we've done it.
Move in second, Katie?
I did.
Sally moved, I didn't get a second.
Second, yeah.
Okay. And it's conditional, you have a conditional on insurance?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Sally, iPads?
iPads? I am opposed to iPads, so I'm not moving.
Do you wanna wait until Rebecca's here?
Nope.
I also have some thoughts.
Okay.
Um, you know, we have, we have...
Are you moving to buy that, Jason?
No, I wanna wait till Rebecca's here, I wanna table it.
Well, we, let, let me just go back. We had a couple of discussions, one of which the fire chief was here for, and we talked about iPads for the fire department and iPads for the building department. And both of which I am more in favor of than iPads for any of us. I mean, I obviously don't need one, but, um, but I think, I think that it could be useful for the building department and the fire department since Kevin said there's so many different fire apps, fire department-related apps, so...
This includes three for the fire?
I saw that, yes, I do. But so, I would be willing to purchase some of these provided that they were specified enough for us.
So I will move to purchase iPads for the building department and for the fire department, of which I think Kevin requested three.
He requested three, so...
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote. I, I think, since this was Rebecca's idea, I think we should wait for her to be here to discuss it.
Well, I, I think we can accomplish by amending the, the motion. We can amend the motion for tonight's purpose to just approve the purchase of three iPad air with Wi-Fi and cellular for the fire department, which is the second half of the motion.
Just do that.
And just drop the first half of the motion for tonight's meeting.
And we'll table the rest of the motion.
Well, do we wanna do it for the building department is my question.
Well, it's not on, it's not on this motion anyhow, but if you wanna add that to the...
Well, it's not on the agenda, but we could amend...
I don't think they need, do they want them?
Well, I mean, I would think one for...
When we ask them to?
Why don't we defer this until we know and then put it on the next? If we're gonna consider the first part of this amendment at the next board meeting, then we can consider adding, well before that, additional iPads or iPads only for the building department.
I just wanna make a note, everybody. This was supposed to have been done in last year's budget.
Exactly, that's my question.
Not budgeted for, it is not budgeted for in the building department, as far as I know. And it is not budgeted for in the fire department.
The fire chief said that he has, he can move things around.
Right, but so, so my question, though, is, you know, like, I, I only have access to Wi-Fi. I do not have, like, if I go outside and I can't connect to the Wi-Fi in here, I do not have internet. So, this is, this is by ones that will have a monthly plan that will allow for, is what I mean?
Cellular and Wi-Fi.
That will allow for that kind of connection, like, like we have on our smartphone.
Yes.
Is that necessary? Do we want that? Does the fire department want that? Who's paying for that? Where, where is that money coming from?
Rebecca knows all that.
Because it's one, I think it's one thing to have a one-time payment of $700 that we find the money for. It's another to have just started our budget and have a monthly payment for three, six, nine, whatever number it is that we have a vote on.
You're talking about a major budgetary implication.
Exactly.
So, again, do you wanna table this until Rebecca's here? She would have the answers to these questions. Because she talked, the fire chief and she's their liaison.
Okay.
Well, it's been moved and seconded, it hasn't yet. Okay.
Okay, so you want to table this, though?
Yes.
Because I'm not, I'm not hearing enough, enough...
But I want, I feel like we've been asking these kinds of questions from day one, and we have not gotten the answer to them.
Talk to Rebecca.
Exactly. Well, we have tried, Jason, and, you know, this was supposed to be entertained because there was money in last budget, in the trustees' budget for this purpose. I, myself, am not, I don't want one.
Right.
Okay. It is not...
It's not a tool you would use.
It, it, right, it just would be a waste of money, the way, given my age and the way I function.
Wait a minute.
I'm speaking for my age, baby.
I think I resemble that.
I am not a tech person. I like hard copy.
Anyway, I want to go on record that I would support it for the fire department tonight if we were to entertain it tonight. If we want to table it, that's okay with me, too.
I, I, I heard questions and we would need to...
Yeah, I think, I think we should get the answers.
All right, so let's table this on our next meeting.
Okay, sorry, Katie, for all your hard work on this topic.
Now, we only have three more things that I...
Let's go, yeah. Move.
Um, the plaque.
Yes.
Sally, do you want to talk or should I?
It, I believe when, and I think it is wonderful that we have Peace Park designated as an historic site. However, I also believe that this community and our visitors to the community would look at this and say, gee, I wonder why the rock was designated as an historic site? Because it is totally without any explanation. I asked Jason to work with me, and I would like to propose that the plaque, that this board support and purchase a plaque to go not where the NIMI plaque belongs. The historic commission plaque will be removed from that. The NIMI plaque, the sister city plaque will go back where it belonged, and the new plaque and the historic marker will go on another rock that I have looked at with Blue. And I would like to suggest that the wording on the plaque read, "At this location on February 27, 2004, Mayor Jason and I won his middle initial," which he hasn't told me.
Yes.
M. Jason M. West performed 25 same-sex marriages. The action of Mayor West paved the way for marriage equality to be legalized both in New York State and across the United States. And I'm going to move that plaque. I'm not going to allow the mayor to vote on it, so I hope that I have unanimous support.
No, I think I have to stay in for this.
Okay.
Any discussion?
No, I think three.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
I mean, I'm staying.
You are welcome. And I am sure, Jason, that there are many, many people out there who are very grateful for the action that you took. It was significant.
Thank you. And I actually got to marry some of them after the, it was legalized in New York, and it was a very, very, very... It was heart, not heartbreaking, what's the opposite?
Heartwarming.
Warming.
Yeah, it was heartwarming.
I hope not heartbreaking.
It was heartwarming not having the same couples there, but no cameras. It was very, it was very interesting. Um, all right, well, thank you for that, all of you. Um, we just have two more things. Uh, first, I, what kind of... Um, do all of you have the revised reorg?
Yes.
With the, with the, with the bond attorney?
I'm not sure everything is on it that needs...
Everything should be on it, on the one that we have with, that has a yellow line on the bottom.
Yeah, yeah. But we don't have...
Rail Trail Association.
We do not have the police commission. We do not have...
Do we have, do we have an official one?
Yes.
The police commission is not ours.
This is from last year. Then, didn't they get rid of the police commission?
No, they, they got rid of, they repealed the law that created a separate police...
But they have...
Oh, they have separate reasons?
Yes. And we should have a rest commission.
So, we, we want to, am I, Tom, do you, I hear Sally, the former police commissioners, want their liaison to the police commission? Is that something...
I would like Ariana to take it because she has done it in the past. If she's willing to do it, otherwise...
I am totally willing to do it.
Do you want to add it? Do you want to take something?
Uh, we can add it. Well, I, I also, I mean, well...
I have a whole bunch.
Yeah, I have also been, um...
What, you guys should have sent this to me before, we could have just put it in.
I was contacted by Irene Burner about a year ago regarding the Rail Trail Association and have been going to their meetings since. So I'm about to continue as their self-appointed liaison, but now officially appointed liaison.
I have that.
I'm with her secretary, so I'm happy.
A problem, Jason, and, and what I'm going to do if she would like me to help her do it. And I, I pulled back the reorganization agendas for the last, our last years together.
Yeah.
And each one is different.
We keep adding it.
And so Katie and I, if Katie is willing and the board is willing, will work out a shell, fully designated, for agenda.
I have to tell you, this one was based on last year, and Nancy and Will spent, as Irene Adams, Nancy and Will spent most of last week editing and changing.
Right, and so...
So, certainly, we can happily do that.
And I went back to 2011, which is very different than 2012, which is different than 2013. So I think it would be most helpful to the clerk if we had just an outline form so that she can just fill in every year, and we don't go through this. We used to have the Ulster County Transportation Council, Jason, of which you served on.
Right.
That is, and...
Because that's now Brenda.
Hmm?
That's now Brenda, that's on the board.
Well, it's very, very important that we have a representative, given the intermodal stuff that we're doing.
No, we do, we have Brenda.
Okay, so Brenda should be appointed there.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got, hold on, rail trail, Ariana.
Police commission, Ariana, Ulster County Transportation. I have a question for Tom. It is my understanding that the Downtown Business Association is sort of defunct.
I haven't heard a thing from them since Julie went over and took over this New York Rising activity.
So I think that's...
I would, I would be, I would be happy to contact her...
Let's find out if there's...
And determine whether they're going to function in any way.
I would like to suggest, would you like to be the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, of which we should have one?
I, I certainly could be, yeah. I've done lots of things like that in my, in my life.
Let's keep DVA on there until we hear from them that they've...
Let me, I'll contact Julie and find out what the story is.
Tom?
Yep. We need, have not had a...
I think Ulster County Planning Board.
That's Brenda.
I, I know what you're saying, it should be on the...
Thank you. County Planning Board should be Morty Switen and Brenda.
And Brenda's the alternate.
Yeah. And from the mayor of Southern Ulster Alliance Design.
No, they never finished that project, huh?
I, uh, I, I tried, well, well, I wouldn't say that they didn't finish the project because the trail connections are happening and the county executive has taken it up. But, um, I, I've done all the research that I could possibly do to find out when and where these meetings might be held. And from what I was told, they are not needed.
And as a liaison to the rail trail, the Walk Hill Rail Trail, you needed to do the other, you could, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So should we, should we leave it on there? Or are you, are you sure they're, they're disbanding? Or are they just in the low period?
I mean, it might be, it might be just, you know, a low where it's not meeting because they're, the project was taken on by...
I think that's, I think it was deemed, I, I would take it off.
But, but, I mean, who knows if it could...
Let's keep it, let's keep it, let's keep it on there.
Be in the future or something else like that.
Yeah.
You know, it could be outreach to us for that.
Okay.
All right. What else do you have, Sally?
Um, we don't have any of our inner, internal committees listed anymore, such as personnel, finance, liaison to departments, which we used to...
Well, we haven't done that in years. We haven't done that in a decade, liaisons to departments.
A year, in 2011 and '12, we had them.
Fire department was the only one.
There was parts in recreation.
Yeah, there was a couple of other odd things.
We did, we did have them, so...
We didn't, well, I, I know because we stopped it and know before.
I see Katie's got the correction on our bond council.
Okay.
So, that's good. Um, I, I personally think that the housing board and the landlord-tenant committee ought to go off until such time as we have functioning committees.
We do have a functioning housing board. It's moving slowly, but it's functioning. They've been meeting.
We have not approved the, anything that we were supposed to a year ago.
They've been working on the local law.
That's what I'm talking about. We don't have a local law that allows it.
They're still working on it. It's, it's an ad hoc group. It's just not in the code.
Okay, so if it's ad hoc, it shouldn't be in the reorganization meeting agenda. And tenant landlord, the same. We do not have...
Tenant landlord is in the village code, so...
Right.
As liaison, you bear some responsibility for, for trying to get it, at least trying to get it up and running again.
Okay. Do you want to leave it on then?
I'd like to leave both on because I know Rebecca is working on it.
I think tenant landlord on because it's actually in the code.
That is...
But I think housing board maybe should be taken off because as ad hoc, we...
Why don't we just call it ad hoc housing board? Because we've, because we've already appointed people to it, you know?
But we don't have a law that allows it.
No, but we have, we have a group of people who we've appointed and are working on it. I'm just saying it exists. Um, it just, its purpose is to create a law to allow more authority.
I don't really care, but I think we should be...
It matters to me. Would you mind leaving it on?
Does it matter to you?
It matters to me.
Okay, then we'll leave it on. It doesn't matter to me. I think for the planning board attorney, we ought to specify...
But, yeah, just add, add, I'm sorry, Sally, just, I'm going to just change it to ad hoc housing board.
Yeah, it's fine.
That's fine.
That way, that way it's...
Whatever makes you comfortable. I'd like to specifically say George Rodenhouse for Rodenhouse and Shale for the planning board attorney.
Planning board ZBA.
And Victoria, and Katie, help me say her last name.
Polidora.
Polidora. As the ZBA attorney specifically.
So, why don't we mention, we'll mention, mention both? Like Victoria Polidora?
Yeah, both.
Rodenhouse and Shale, obviously.
That's what I said.
Okay.
And instead of...
Richard Peneirinarius or just...
Yep, yep. If, if you prefer, if that's who you expect to do. And then, for policy approvals, rather than those that are stated, I would like to move all policies adopt, be read adopted by the Board of Trustees because we have a lot of other policies that we have adopted in the last three years. And it is my hope and Katie's hope that we will very soon be able to give you two things to peruse and approve. A new policy book and then a new employee handbook, which contains pertinent policies. Two new handbooks that we have been working on diligently and are almost done. So, those are my changes, and I will move the reorg agenda.
Hold on.
Hmm?
Hold on.
Oh, you have some more?
Yeah, I have, I have other things. Um, one, one of the things that I've been thinking about, maybe this is not the appropriate time for this to happen, but, um, you know, we've had the same, the same engineer for a very, very long time.
Fifty years.
And, uh, and like, I know, I know people who do consulting work, and they, they get hired every year, but they still have to put in a bid every year. And I think that we should move to a policy where we reevaluate these things every year, as opposed to sticking with the status quo. And just, and, and even if we're going with the same company, it should not be this guarantee that we should, we should be getting a bid where, where recognizing, okay, the rate, the rate is exactly the same. The rate is, they have to increase it 5%. They have, or whatever it might be, or asking them to decrease it 5%. You know, I think, like, these are the kinds of things that, you know, we were, we were in a situation where we, you know, did not have a renewed contract from our former attorney, for instance. And, you know, I think if we just did this every year, we don't have to worry about that kind of thing.
Well, more I would prefer, and it's not part of my motion on the reorg, we can make it a separate motion if you agree, is I think our engineers should be on retainer.
They are.
You and I have talked about this, Jason, and I really think they should be.
They are.
What do you mean they are? They're less individually for everything.
They, Clouser, Clouser does. Do they?
Water, water and sewer.
No, we've budgeted the same amount earlier. What am I thinking?
And we could break it into two retainers, one for water and sewer.
Well, do you two want to work on this and come back to the board with a formal proposal?
I mean...
No, I think I'd like you to do it.
Nope.
I mean, if we're doing this right now anyway, then this is something that we would do next year.
For next, obviously, for next.
But, um...
You want to work on it?
I mean, I've already been thinking about it, so...
Okay, let's do it.
Yeah, you guys come up with something for next year?
Actually, no, I'm interested also.
Yeah.
I believe that we, we should, if not every year, we should certainly periodically go out to bid and have other information on available attorneys.
Auditors.
Audit, you know, like the...
The whole thing.
It's like an employee evaluation.
Yeah.
It's exactly the same.
I don't know if we want to burden ourselves and/or the administration with doing every one of these every year.
Well, let us just see if, what Ariana and I can come up with. We'll work with Nancy.
I'll consult with you, but...
You want to work to...
Well, but the three of us shouldn't be meeting together.
Oh, no!
Which are, which are...
Well, we'll work on it, but I have...
It's just, it could be short, but...
I have moved the adoption of the reorg...
Well, I have another thing.
Oh.
Holidays. Um, are these the, are these federal holidays?
They're in the contract.
Well, I mean, like, are these, you know, I guess I just, I think about, like, all right, Good Friday and Christmas. What about Rosh Hashanah? Or, I mean, I'm not, you know, I don't particularly care. I just think about it as, like, if we are the government...
These are the federal.
We, that's what, that's what my question is. I don't know what the federal holidays are because I don't operate...
Although Good Friday is not.
Yeah, Good Friday's not a federal, huh?
Good Friday is not.
That was the number one that stuck out to me, was Good Friday. Because, I mean, Christmas Day, I feel like that's, you know, that's federal.
Yeah, it's a cultural...
Off of the law for that day.
Other than Good Friday, they are federal holidays.
Is, is Good Friday in contract?
Hmm? Good Friday's...
Nancy has said, Nancy, again, definitely the holidays beforehand, has said...
This is what we have done in the past and by contract.
I, I thought it was what we've done in the past. I was wondering if it's by contract or if the...
Well, with our union, it is.
Okay.
And then the rest of the employees to...
Which I guess I know.
At that same, probably, yeah.
But my, my, my bigger question was are these federal, are these all federal holidays?
It, it's not.
Okay.
At least nobody told me it was.
Okay.
Okay.
If there's a motion on the table, I'll second it.
Um, as amended.
As amended, yes. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
My, I...
But then you said we're doing the policies separately, weren't, that was not part of it?
No, that, that's all policies.
No, I moved, I changed it. I amended it to say it's all policies, it's not just these.
Right.
It's all policies. That was one of my amendments.
Okay. I heard you say that. I know you wanted to go down.
That was a good, that was a good idea. All right, so we only have one thing left to do and that's go into executive session to discuss personnel issues.
Can I just ask the board's permission to do something? It has come up with CIT, Blue agrees, but I have to talk to the shade tree commission. We have liability, potential liability issue with the sweet gum trees on the side of the building.
Why?
Because people are falling on them. They're on the sidewalk, they fall quite regularly.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I've seen them fall.